Good evening and welcome to the Sunderland Elementary School Committee meeting, Tuesday, November 19th. Call the meeting to order at 7:05. First item on the agenda is review and approve minutes of October 15th, 2013. What was it? Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Well, first, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any discussion?
Nope, I didn't have anything.
Oh, I know what it was. The name of public comment, it was Julie Haneski, not Hennessy, parent of a fifth grader, came to think.
Oh, could you give me the spelling, correct spelling?
Can you give it the correct spelling?
It's H-A-N-S-K-I-E.
H-A-N-S-K-I-E.
Yes.
Okay, I can make that correction.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't...
Is that right?
She's gonna kill me.
H-A-N-E-S-K-I.
Yeah.
One more time. H-A-N.
E.
E.
S-K-I.
S-K-I.
Just get the S-K-I.
Thank you.
E-S-K-I, okay.
Great, next is financial statement.
Good evening. Tonight, we have October's report in front of us, and we do have one variance on page two. It is the computer registers. We have a variance of $850, and this is due to the move of the Reddicker Student Database from a standalone server to cloud computing. This will be a reoccurring cost, and we will adjust the FY '15 budget to reflect the increased costs. But we don't have to maintain our own server here anymore. It makes it much more efficient for the principal to be able to access the database from any device, not just his standalone computer. And it also allows us at the district to take all of the different schools' districts and roll it up to do the district reporting. You do have seven warrants to sign tonight: the fiscal agent payroll for October, the monthly warrant, our student activity fund, Horizon expenses, which is your new program here in the building, school choice, school lunch, and then the after-school program. And I just want to let you know that on next month's agenda, we will be awarding, we're having you vote to award the new five-year transportation contract for Sunderland Elementary School. The bids were open today, but they're not confirmed as a good bid yet, so we are not allowed to release the information until next month.
How many people did we have?
We did have two bidders.
Public comment? Hello? Okay, so on to new business, discussion items, the budget timeline.
Yes, you have the timelines. This is the procedure that I know for those of you who've been on committee for a couple of years that we followed in the past. So, at next month's meeting on December 6th, we will be presenting the budget books, and that will be your first peek. Patty has been meeting with all of the principals. The principals have been meeting with not only her, but Bob Lesko, Scott Hall, and Karen Ferandino to go over kind of the big items. We're trying to have people think in terms of one, two, and three-year plans, so that there may be items that we wish to have for next year that we can't. So are there ways that we can do it incrementally over a couple years' period of time? So we'll be bringing those to you.
Is that the right date, December 6th? That sounds early for Sunderland. At our next meeting, did we mail?
Oh, yeah, you're right, Patty.
You're right, Patty. I don't have a calendar. Does anyone have?
The 17th.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 17th.
Oh, okay.
17th, it's the next line down.
Okay.
Yep. That's our internal...
Oh, yeah, that's... You said December 6th.
Okay, yeah. It's okay, don't panic. December 17th, you have plenty of time. So that's what I have for that.
Policy EEAA-1, bus riding.
Yeah, if you want to turn in your agendas, there is an existing policy, and Ben had had an inquiry from a parent to see if there might be a consideration, knowing that Waitley, Conway, and Frontier have amended their policies to include school choice students who might be on an existing route. And I'll give you the examples. We've had grandparents who are taking care of a student after school. They live within the town, you know, and on a bus route, and they have requested their granddaughter to be dropped off three days a week. The way the other schools have approached it is that there is also a protocol, and the protocol states that the parents have to fill out an application. They have to approve it, or giving permission, that it has to be on an existing route, and there has to be room on the bus. So I can tell you, district-wide, we only have about four students who take part. So it's not a large number. But because this parent brought it to Ben's attention, I thought I would give you the existing policy, and if you look at the amended policy, the sixth little paragraph down, this is the only difference between the two. It says, "Sunderland School District provides transportation according to the existing routes for school choice students." There is a vote listed on this agenda. We don't do that. We bring it forward one month, and then we talk about it the next month. So I'm just bringing it to you for consideration, and what might be helpful next month if I bring some of the protocols that the other schools are looking at. I don't think you've had more than one inquiry.
Just one up to this point.
Yeah, and that's typically what has happened at each of the schools. It's been one, and I think Conway has two students who are taking part of it. But generally, it's a relative, and it's a help to the parent, either dropping off in the morning or for rides home.
And it's already on the route?
And it's already, it has to be an existing bus stop.
And there's no income involved from the other district because it's a pre-service, right?
No, there's no money that would be exchanged.
Right, there's not like additional money for bussers.
And it's not costing us money.
Right, no.
Right.
So this would have to be an existing bus stop?
Correct.
Even if it's on the route?
Right, there are no bus stops.
Well, it has to be, I mean, obviously, if it's 102 River Road, you know, and there's nobody at 102 River Road, but they want 104 River Road, so it's on the route, because we don't have like a designated bus building.
Okay.
There are, a lot of the streets, though, men, everybody kind of gathers at the end of one or another.
Gotcha, that makes sense.
I think most of the kids, at least in Sunderland, don't really get sort of door-to-door.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, I know some places do do that, but everybody kind of goes to the end of a certain area. Like with Claybrook Road, we all go to the end.
Must be my own experiences.
I know, me too.
I was picked up in front of my house.
A driveway to driveway, right.
Yeah, I was too.
Yeah. And that's typically what has, well, it happens that way, and then if you have somebody who's on a very rural route, it does become more door-to-door service.
Yeah.
But in a more established area, it's like Amy said, there is kind of a designation.
Common place.
Yeah, that people have gathered. So I'm just bringing it to you for consideration.
But those rural areas could be where this becomes problematic, because if it's going for, if the bus is going two and a half to three miles further than it would normally go before turning around, that may be something you want to think about.
Yeah, so, but you have the purview to, you know, to make that decision. So I don't know if that parent has come back to you, but I'm just bringing it forward to you to think about.
I would think, especially in Conway, it would be interesting to see how they have it worded, because that's a place where...
This is exactly how it's worded.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there, you could really go crazy there.
Mm-hmm.
Way out of the way.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, so we'll talk about it again next month.
Great. Moving on to the 2013-14 school emergency evacuation plan.
Yeah, I brought this to you last month, and I had given it to all the principals for their input, and the only thing that was suggested or changed was that when we talk about the vehicles for evacuation, they asked to have the names of the bus companies, their phone numbers listed right in the policy. So that's all we did. So it's the same policy that, or it's not even a policy, but it's the same protocol that you saw last month, except for that addition. So obviously, you hope that you never have a major disaster, that you have to put this in place, but I think it's good to visit on a regular basis safety plans.
Do the town do that planning?
Right.
It was, I mean, I read through it, it's pretty exhaustive.
Yeah.
Any questions? No, we're not gonna break the record. Calendar, change parent conference days from March 21st to 2020.
Yes, so here's what happened. We, as you know, we're doing a new report card for the elementary schools this year. And originally, the parent conference days were reduced from three in the spring to two. And the reason for that was that they felt that parents wouldn't necessarily have to go to a spring conference unless they had questions or concerns on their child's report card. And if we kept it the way it is now, they wouldn't have a report card to make that determination, and B, it really interferes with the MCAS. So we're proposing, and I brought it to the other two school committees, proposing to move it from the 20th and 21st to April 10th and 11th. That way, parents will have their report cards, they're going to be distributed in the spring, I think we figured around the 7th of April. So they'd have a couple of days to make a decision if they needed to schedule an appointment with their child's teacher.
It's always in April. I wonder why we went to March.
I think they were looking at, because it's a trimester, there's three reporting periods, that they were trying to do it a little earlier. But it really doesn't make sense to do it around MCAS.
Around MCAS is what's really, yeah.
Yeah, and not to have, you know...
Yeah, no, that's a real piece of information.
Right.
Yeah, and are these half-days?
They're half-days, right.
Could be, yeah.
The same as the fall. They're all half-days. So that we will need a vote on later on, or you can do it now, whatever.
Do we have any questions? Doesn't change, it's not contractual, it's just a change of date.
Right.
Different dates.
Okay. Do I have a motion to amend the calendar for 2014, March 20th and 21st, change to April 10th and 11th? So moved? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It doesn't need to be seconded.
Oh, yeah, Tracy's seconded.
I've decided you seconded. It makes it simple tonight.
That's right, cut and dry.
Yeah.
And November 5th, insert what you...
Yeah, this is just information for you, because it's already occurred, and I know it doesn't feel, you know, timely, but I was just so impressed the way we did in-service this year. And I have to credit Louise Law and Sarah Mitchell for doing this. We had a full in-service day, and we have limited funds, and oftentimes, we, I think educators especially, have a tendency to look for expertise outside of their area in their district. And I think if you look at the events that were listed, we clearly have a very high level of expertise within the district. And what they did for this particular day is that they paired elementary and secondary people together, which was really fascinating to go to some of those workshops. Went to one, and it was a high school teacher and a kindergarten teacher. So, but they were talking about technology, and it worked out beautifully. So I'm just bringing it to your attention because it was, we received very good feedback. Sarah did a follow-up survey, and it cost us almost no money, other than some bagels.
That's great. And this is really nice to see, Marty. We very rarely get to see that we're all up to...
Yes, terrific.
You know?
Yeah. And like I said, everybody, you know, they would love follow-ups to it. Some of the most popular ones were the technology ones using smart boards, beginner and advanced. And the other one that was really popular was de-escalation techniques. And Pete Chrisifoli did that with Scott Dredge, and I think they did, I don't know if you remember, Ben, if they enlisted someone else to help, because it got filled very quickly, and they had to offer another one.
Yeah, I don't recall, but also the school moves.
Yes.
Was very popular, and that dealt with self-regulating strategies for teachers and instructional assistance as well.
So it was fun for me, you know, to go around and sit in on a few of them here and there, to see what was going on, and to see how these teachers were working with each other. Teachers who may not have really known each other beforehand, so...
Nice to connect like that in the district.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I just thought it would be helpful for you to see that.
So was the self-regulating for the teacher, for the instructor? It was the students helping them self-regulate? No, I mean, I'm actually being...
No, it was, it probably helped the teachers self-regulate themselves as well, but it was strategies that the teachers could bring back to their classroom to help the students.
Okay, okay.
Who might need body breaks.
Right, 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 okay.
At the younger little or...
What a great...
Yeah, very useful, okay.
And the workshops, they were all very hands-on, and, you know, I attended two of the smart board workshops, and they were great, and they really just applied to everyone who's in.
You can almost tell right away when you're in something like that, you know, whether you should stay, you know what I mean? Whether it's gonna be worth it or not. That's great.
It's almost like how the conferences set up. You can go to different, you know what I mean?
Right.
What a great, yeah.
And that's what they did. They were able to pick and choose and go to one thing in the morning and something else in the afternoon. So it was, it was very worthwhile.
Interesting. And next, we have enrollment trends.
Well, I have provided you with way more information than you probably ever wanted, but I like data, so you're stuck with it, and I'll probably be giving you more. So if I could just draw your attention to the first page where it's the graphs with the resident and student enrollment. This particular graph does include pre-K. As we look at some of the others, they don't, so it's easy to see that the numbers get skewed. But if you look at 2011 to today, you can see the change, and these are all October 1 reports. And then when you look down at school choice enrollment, if you look at it district-wide, there are currently 369 students within our district who are school choice. So it's become a very important aspect of our enrollment. And then if you look at, I broke it down so that you have all of the schools in front of you, so that you have some comparisons, but when you look at Sunderland's, just keep in mind, this is the 10-year comparison, that this does not include pre-K. And I also want you to just keep in mind that prior to 2002, school choice enrollments were so negligible that when you look at some of these other statistics, where we go back to 1980, those were all, 1980 to 2002, these were residents. Resident population. One of the things that we're doing is we've compiled information to be sent to NESDEC. And I can't remember what the acronym stands for, but they compute trends and population growth. So we've given them information, we're waiting for them to get back, because that's an area that I find difficult to predict. And I think I was saying at the Frontier School Committee that when that building was proposed and voted in 1996, 97, 98, it was with the understanding that we would have by now well over 1,000 students. And that's not the case. But that was, that was what the predictions were.
Right.
So you really have to look at so many different things. The number of building permits, you know, the number of your census, which is often inaccurate, but I think it's important information to keep track of. When you go to your next chart, it's just another way of looking at it. It's from 2009 to 2013. This does include preschool, and it has your residents and school choice. I want you to take a look at 2010, where your school choice went down to 14. And that was a direct result of your budget cuts and programmatic cuts. So I know I may be preaching to the choir, but it's an important thing to let the public know as well, because it's back up to 41.
It's unbelievable.
And it takes, you know, I, I am surprised and pleased that it came back as quickly as it did, because oftentimes it doesn't, so... And then the other one, which is your longitudinal study, which is 1980 to 2015 predicting, this does include kindergarten through 12 and special ed, but it does not include pre-K. All right? So it's just good to keep, you know, an eye on, it's...
It's really interesting information.
Yeah, it's probably when you think about yourself, when you moved here, and when some of your areas started to become more developed, you know, you can see population rising and falling, so... So that's what I have, and I'm bringing it forward to every school committee, and, you know, play around with it, look at it, and we'll keep you updated if anything changes. And when I get the NESDEC report, I'll certainly bring that. I think it'll be a month or two before we get that, though.
I think it was interesting, someone made a comment too at the Frontier meeting, that although we were, you know, the building is still completely used, because the need has changed so dramatically in, you know, the past 15, 20 years. The way we do things has changed.
Well, and I think, when I started at Frontier in 2002, since 2002, we have added five special ed programs, substantially separate, self-contained, and the level of the students who need services have become more profound, so that you need additional rooms for equipment and PT and OT, and you did not have those in the past. So that's seven classrooms right away that are used for those programs and equipment. So the needs do change, and that's in a relatively short period of time.
Right, the way we do it. Okay, onward. I will start with my report. I just wanted to thank Ed Hines for putting together a beautiful heartfelt tribute to Tim Merritt. The music, the tributes, and the children were combined for a wonderful celebration of Tim's life and achievements. I think that he would have approved. Thanks to all the participated, and Amy for the wonderful words on behalf of this committee. And then I will just do my Frontier update. We did some policies, these, we also did a concussion policy and the bus riding. We bought a bus, not a bus, a van.
A multifunctional school activity bus.
Like a helicopter.
It's like an airport transport vehicle.
And Patty and I are doing the maiden run, so...
How many kids does it hold?
14.
14, so it's...
Plus the driver.
It'll be good for all the small teams and, you know, small events, and it's a great investment for our...
And we're having lettering done now.
That's fabulous. Great. What color is it?
White, has to be white.
Oh, yeah.
It can't be yellow, it can't look anything like a school bus.
Right.
Because that's a different licensing.
Okay. We also did the update on the information on the population, and also what happened to the graduating class of 2013, which was 86% went on to two- or four-year college, which is fabulous. 86%? 86%. And the majority, I want to say 56 at least, were four-year.
Yeah.
2% to military and 12% to the workforce and 1% to...
Undecided, I think.
It was a technical school.
Yeah.
We went over the, which is great. And the list of schools was impressive, to say the least. Went over the emergency evacuation plan and the in-service events. I don't, I'm gonna bring this up now, which I emailed you about the playground, if that's okay. So Tracy and I have been working on something, and we're just gonna sort of present what it's about here briefly, and then we'll need to have a discussion and vote hopefully at our next meeting. The current playground is about 20 years old here at Sunderland Elementary. There are a number of concerns with, you know, it's just an older playground, and it needs to have some improvements. Our goal is to revitalize the current playground to today's standards and also make it handicap accessible and incorporate a walking path with fitness stations. Sounds big, but really doable. Tracy is also on a committee in town that is working on making the town itself more pedestrian-friendly, so this will work with that goal, which is sort of a town-wide system of trails that they are working on. We hope to pay for it with mostly CPA funds that are raised in the town by the townspeople, and this is exactly what, you know, one of those things that, that was meant for. And we'll also do some local fundraising. And the school committee involvement, we need a mechanism to run the funding through and also a sort of body in charge of it for the, to make it work with the CPA. So, yeah, we'll need to talk about that.
Yeah, I have not found anything that gives the school committee authority.
Okay.
The PTA has authority, the principals have, the principals have authority over student activity accounts, but I have found no funds that can be set up for a school committee.
It's not, it, well, it would be a school, it wouldn't be the school committee, it would be through the school, and we just happen to be the two people that are. So maybe it's not a school committee thing, maybe it's more of just a...
They suggested that it be a board, you know, sort of a formal board.
Isn't that what they said, they wanted a formal voting group?
Board.
But, I don't know.
And so I know, like, with this...
We don't ever have the money, Patty.
Right.
It just, it's almost...
Well, someone has to have it.
Well, no...
Someone has to have custody of the funds.
The selectmen do.
Yeah.
We're just, we're just proposing where the funds go and giving them the, we're doing the work for where the funds go.
The way it's worked in other towns is that somebody brings a proposal to the CPA.
Right.
And if they approve it, it still has to go on the town meeting, on the warrant.
Right, right, exactly.
Has to go on annual warrant.
Right.
So the money is actually held by the town. Now, what I don't know is how the bills are submitted for the work and for the purchasing. That's the question I have. And I don't know if that's something that you need to get from CPA.
We'll find out. Okay, we'll figure that out.
Because other groups have done this, so...
Well, I know, like, Conway had done theirs, so we could certainly touch base with them and see.
And I can call Margaret Nardevitz and see which information she has, and get back to her now.
And the gentleman that we've been working with, Richard Lepaca, is, you know, he's the go-to guy.
Is he still chair of, okay.
Yes. So that's sort of, we're sort of in the infancy of that, but working on getting, you know, estimates on just getting a plan together.
Are you hoping to have something, if approved by them, on the warrant for April?
Yes.
Okay, so that's your goal is to...
Yes.
And the application has not been, you know, completed yet and submitted.
Right.
It's all just sort of just beginning.
I think it's mid-December.
Right.
Yep.
Right, and January 9th, I think, is the deadline for your application.
Okay.
Now, is this for the pre-K and K playground as well?
It's just the back. It's just the back.
Right.
But if there are things that need to be addressed in the pre-K and K, you know, I mean, now would be the time to take a look at everything and prioritize it, and then, you know...
Problem is timing.
There's new design. There's no design.
Right.
Because the application process, while not lengthy, as specifically for bids and pricing, and you have to be careful about that, because that's what they're going to vote on, so.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So, he's been, he's great, Richard's been great, and we'll sort of work with him and try to get this off the ground, so we can get it done.
Some of the, the sort of headlines were the surface, and, you know, as Justine said, the pathway, you know, adding, you know, so, but the, revitalizing is the right word, it's not-
No.
-leveling and beginning again, that is not the goal. You know, it just, you know, there's some concerns.
Okay.
And this is a new mechanism in town, which is-
Right.
-which is great. So, and I did want to mention, actually, one other thing, the Veterans Day ceremony, which was just really, really wonderful, you did a great job then, and I'm always amazed at the children, there's not a peep, and they're so good, and they just, they really focus on it, and so I really am thrilled that we are continuing to do that, and hope we do that, because I think it does give the kids here a special appreciation for Veterans Day.
It's the only town of the four towns that actually does anything to, well, I shouldn't say that, but does anything with the outside community, so.
The veterans from the various branches who attended the event came back to the school afterwards, visited all the classrooms, ate lunch with the kids, some served lunch to the kids.
Yes, the kids loved that part.
And, I mean, they're just-
They really make connections.
So professional, and the kids, the kids were in awe the entire day.
And it's some kids' only encounter ever with anybody, so.
And when you think about experiences for a particular student during the school year-
Right.
-and this easily can stand out as one of them, as one of their most memorable experiences.
Absolutely. So, thank you to everyone, and Ed, again, did a lot of work on that, but it's a great thing that we do here, so keep it going. That's all I've got, and we'll go, and they'll collaborate, and you're on.
I'm on, all right. So, right when I started, it was, brought to my attention that there was money in the budget for a Spanish teaching position for one day a week. We are holding interviews next Tuesday, and we're looking to have that up and running sometime after Thanksgiving. We hope to have it on Fridays, where grades one through six will receive half an hour of instruction, and kindergarten 15 minutes per week, and that's what it's looking like. We're still playing with a couple different models, but that would allow each class to receive individual instruction.
Right.
I had a meeting today with Sarah Burstein, our second grade teacher, Louise Law, our curriculum director, and we're in the process of setting up an all-school literacy and writing celebration, and this might be something that's coming up in the spring, and we're going to propose it at the next staff meeting. And ultimately, we would like it to touch on all academic disciplines, including the arts, music, phys ed, and art class as well. So, that's possibly coming up down, down the road. And we recently had an instructional assistant resign, so we're going to, we posted that job on Monday, and we're going to be holding interviews in the next couple of weeks for that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what's the concert?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I don't know that particular group.
So, Manquito is, this was a, is being sponsored by the PTO.
Yeah.
And it's in celebration of bringing Spanish instruction back into the building.
Ah, okay.
So, that's coming up on December 5th. It'll be a school-wide concert.
School-wide, okay.
Yes.
And, actually, I've already talked to you about the first two, which is the budget timelines and procedures, and the enrollment and trends. And this feels like it happened a very long time ago, but I did present my goals and objectives to a joint school committee meeting on October 29th, and I have seven goals and an action plan, and I am grateful for their attention, because I think I spoke nonstop for an hour and a half.
That was a good meeting. I thought it was great, I learned a lot.
Oh, good. And then I have, have to get everyone back in February. One of the joys of having such a large school committee is trying to get, you know, that many people to come, and I can give you my progress at that point. And I went to the MASC MATS joint conference, and I know Amy and Tracy did as well. There were five school committee members in the district who went, so that was nice. And I actually didn't learn as much about the DDMs, District Sherman method, measures in park and retail, as I did about the Gettysburg Address, which was really sort of the theme in conjunction with teaching the Common Core and breaking down lesson plans. So, that was fascinating. And we were to have had a special meeting on the 14th to hear the results of the subcommittee reports, but people needed more time, they had all met, but they felt they were in the initial stages. So, we have scheduled another meeting on January 23rd, and, and I know there's some hard work going on, Patty's on the capital planning, and I think the discussions, even if we don't come to any conclusions, are very rich and worthwhile, because people understand the need for obtaining things and maintaining buildings, and we need to come up with a vehicle to do it that everybody is accepting of, and so that's, that's our challenge. So, I don't know if you have anything you wanted to add to that meeting, or?
No, I mean, it was a good meeting, it was productive, we met for an hour, Justine was there, and we got some good ideas as to where to head for a definition that all the towns can agree to, as to what will, you know, be capital and what will be operating. And we, I, we need to re-meet again, because our rescheduled meeting, I think, got overlooked, because Mr. Bergeron was at the town, so we do have to reschedule, but we've got some good information going forward, and I think we'll be able to come up with a good result.
The only thing I did tell the other committees is that because we're waiting till after January, any suggestions they have will not impact this year's budget, it will be for next year. And, and that's fine. I think sometimes these processes-
Right.
-take longer than sometimes I would like, but, but that's okay.
I think it was also nice to see the mix of school committee, you, Patty, and the finance committee, and select board, and working like that, I've never seen that happen in all my years, and it was really, it just, I think it, it adds a comfort level for everyone to have a much better discussion about things, that we're more familiar with one another and the challenges that we all have, you know, and they're different, but we all need to work together. So, I think that alone is worth its weight.
And it's funny, because as a result of that, I'm meeting with a finance committee member tomorrow, and I've had requests from other finance, just to come in and sit and chat, so I think that's really important, to establish those relationships, so.
Thank you. And with that, I think we are done. So, I have a motion to adjourn at 7:43.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:43.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you.